Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm calling the special call work session for the Board of Commissioners to order. Please ensure all your cell phones, electronic devices are silenced. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Reginald Watts to lead us in the invocation, and then Commissioner Dutton to lead us in the pledge to the flag.
All right, let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, Lord, right now we just asking and seeking your presence, God. Lord, just be with us on our decision making, God, and lead us to make this community better, God. And, Lord, let this community be a great community. It is in Jesus' name your people have prayed. Amen, amen, amen.
Please show me the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America in the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so everybody understands this is a work session for the commissioners. There will be no votes taken during this work session, and the people who will be speaking will be the people up on the dais to be able to talk to each other, so no citizen comments or anything like that. All right, with that, item, agenda item number one, discussion of final plat for the Rover Rock Farm, sixteen lot minor subdivision, parcels two-three-four-zero-five-zero-zero-one at the intersection of Rex Road, Mary Brook Road, and Highway three-sixty-two. All right, Director?
Good afternoon. As you said, this is a sixteen lot minor subdivision, part of the lots front Rex Road.
Dave, just a second. Just to make sure everybody understands, we're going to talk about these, work our way through them, get answers and questions, and the agenda for tonight is basically the same exact agenda. So it's going to be talked through it now, and if you've got questions before you vote tonight, this is the time to get them all out. All right, excuse me, Director.
All right. A portion of the lots front Rex Road, a portion of the lots front Mary Brook Road, and a portion of the lots front Georgia Highway three-sixty-two. It is AR-one zone. The zoning did not change. There is no zoning procedures involved with this. All of the lots meet AR-one code standards. Per the code, it went through the preliminary plat review of the planning commission back on December fifth. They approved it. The next stage, construction stage, the only construction involved was two fire hydrants, which were installed last week, completed. So now we're at the final plat stage where the Board of Commissioners looks at it, and nothing's changed since the preliminary plat, and again, all the lots meet code standards.
All right, your recommendation is to approve?
Yes.
And you have no legal objection from attorney? Okay. And your recommendation is, questions? Okay. Let's move on to item number two. Discussion on the final plat for the collection of Grayson Park, Phase Two-A and Two-B off of the North McDonough Road.
So these are again final plat revisions. The original final plat was approved by this board before I came to this job. There are two revisions to speak of, one on Phase Two-A and one on Phase Two-B. In your staff report, in the overview, the summary, what changed on Phase Two-A? What was holding up approval of it was the street tree situation. We worked out a compromise my first couple of months here in the office. Based on that approved compromise, the trees were installed satisfactorily in November of last year. So that was completed. That was the only issue with Phase Two-A. Also, on the update-
Just the trees, you said?
Yes, and also on the final plat, they updated some as-built locations of a particular building. Likewise, Phase Two, which is primarily the townhome area, they showed the as-built locations of several buildings that were already built, and they adjusted the lot line on one of them based on an as-built firewall that was needed to go in. So those are the only changes to the final plat from the last time it was reviewed and approved.
Now, we have trees, we have certain kinds of tree, as I remember, while Sun City was being built, we went from one-sized tree to a urban tree because we were having sidewalks being all messed up, causing us to have problems. The big trees were creating a nice canopy overwards, but they were, the roots were tearing up and costing us money in the thing. And they're having the same urban trees that, I think we gave them twelve choices, but that's what they're putting in over there.
Yes, sir. Certain-
Bradford pears, not one of them.
Yeah, no more Bradford pears. Certain trees, their roots are more surface root than other trees, and they can buckle sidewalks in certain situations, so that's probably what you experienced at Sun City.
It was.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure, between you and the last, that we didn't forget that those trees had to be urban tree, urban street trees, okay?
And one of our many code changes we'll make is looking at our tree list and making sure there's not bad trees on there.
Okay. All right. Did I ask that? And so your recommendation is approve?
Yes, sir.
No legal objection from the attorney, or whatever the right words are?
No, Mr. Chairman. David got hit with this code enforcement issue his first day on the job.
Yes, he did.
And we met out with Grayson Park, and they had ignored the trees in the single-family residential side, so it was imperative that they come up and comply with that, and they worked with them to be able to get them into compliance in a reasonable way. So we're able, he's able to bring this to you now because of work he did with the developers.
Okay. Staff, overall recommendation? Okay, anything else from the board? All right. Item number three. Discussion of the proposed text amendment to the Spalding County Court of Ordinances, Appendix Four, Zoning, Article Two, Section two-oh-two, adding various definitions to the solar energy systems.
So we have basically two sections here. One deals with the definition, and then the other deals with where these things will be placed. This mainly concern the changing, not the solar farm issue was settled, but this concerned residential use of solar farms on houses and things of that nature, making sure they could be done in a practical manner, but not be too big or a nuisance to neighbors. We had worked on this since last September and got some input from a couple of knowledgeable citizens about their experience with solar. So the final, final is before you hear, like I said, the definition, and which did not change since the fall, and then some minor tweaking to the districts in which you can have these, and whether it requires a special exception or is outright approved. You look at the very bottom of your staff reports. I said for the March meeting, staff has now removed certain requirements due to the citizen concerns, the one-acre lot for roof systems, the removing of the double-decking prohibition, and clarifying the bonding language. However, the twenty-panel, five-hundred-square-foot limit remains, as staff does not want these accessory systems to be too large and unsightly in residential areas. A variance could be applied for on a case-by-case basis. So you'll see in that section, all the various zoning districts, the rooftop systems are allowed in, and what their standards are, and then you'll see also the separate ground-mounted racking systems, for lack of a better word, you can have next to your house or in the backyard of your house, and what those standards are as well.
But the intent is still just for that house's use?
Yes.
On the farm?
Yes.
And then the, even the small-scale, and certainly the large-scale is not permitted, right?
Yes, just residential yard scale.
Residential yard scale.
Okay.
A larger, James, a larger array would be permitted as a special exception in all of districts.
Yeah, they could, they could come to get the exception, but like it's not by default, you'd have to really ask for it.
When solar, so-
What tab is that?
But it's a page forty-four.
I have some questions about that.
So just while we're waiting real quick, these have to do with the average homeowner being allowed to have solar systems at their individual house without causing a nuisance to neighbors and not having to go through a undue process like you would a solar farm.
And it's the same kind of rules as like a shed, it's kind of sort of be on the side of the back of the house?
Yes.
So I, when I looked at, what'd you say, forty-five?
Forty-four.
When I was looking at that, I found that it was very generic, and part of what, what generated this, my understanding is, is that people were wanting, people wanting to install these panels in their, on their residential properties for either a generator, their swimming pool, whatever it is that they, they needed to power outside of whatever they were doing. And one of the things that concerned me, now, do we have this, this, is this in our packet here too? Is that in a lot of these, these areas, for every different kind of solar, whether it's ground-mounted or, or everything is ground-mounted, or if it's on a roof or something, it states that you have to, you're allowed if you have an acre. And if you're in a subdivision, that means you can't. So aren't those the people who are trying to have just the little solar pole?
I thought, I thought it was roof-mounted and ground-mounted for the house didn't have a-
Right, so the rooftop that Ms. Quinn is right, did have the minimum one-acre requirement in it for the rooftop. There's no reason for that, so that was struck out, so that's no longer an issue for rooftop. I still had it in there, a minimum acreage for the ground-mounted system that could be next to your house. I want to have adequate space between you and your neighbor if you had one of those, not making it be a nuisance. But definitely the rooftop part definitely has, does not have a minimum acreage anymore.
So that, that's a problem for me, because-
So the rooftop doesn't have acreage or something?
Correct.
But the ground-mounted ones do.
Rooftop doesn't have any.
So even in a neighborhood, you could have a rooftop, but-
Which is the issue you have.
So, so, yeah, because, you know, some people may want to do their entire roof, but in general, I want to stick a pole up in the backyard so that the pump for my pool works and the lights around the stuff in the backyard work. I'm only in, in the city of Griffin, I'm only on like a fourth or an eighth of a lot, but I still have yard. So what does me sticking a pole in the ground got to do with my people next door?
That's a good point. Maybe we do put, because like I've got little solar lights under my road hydrants.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Who?
Like, do I need-
Patio, the back patio.
You know, so not like a solar power system, but like, hey, this thing has a panel, and maybe we do put a definition that's like, hey, you know, things that are, this smaller, smaller, don't need any-
I mean, on the side of the road, whether it's a light in your backyard-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or some, some extra something that is not your household, and that would be a problem for me, because we have so many subdivisions that are half acres, or a third of an acre, or a fourth of an acre, which is still a significant amount of space-
Yeah.
-that will have to go through all kind of hoops because they don't have an acre. And-
So maybe we, maybe we say, you know, zero to this size doesn't count the ordinance. You know, like I've got like a, an umbrella that I can deploy, it's got some lights in there, and it's got a little solar panel on top to charge up, you know what I mean? Like, that's technically a ground-mounted solar panel.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? But like, obviously, that's not what this is supposed to be targeting, you know what I'm saying?
James, a distributed umbrella, a distributed generation umbrella is not going to be being ground-mounted.
Well, right, 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 well, that, but that's, I think that's Quinn's point is-
This is going to be something that's on an array.
Yeah.
That is like, like you said, you put your shed-
Yeah.
Put your shed behind or beside your house. This is the same thing, and the actual, the, I'm sorry, the average, I'm sorry, can't talk. The average rooftop or ground-mounted array is going to be limited to, under Georgia power tariffs, one hundred and twenty-five percent of your peak load. So usually those systems are between four to ten KW, which are relatively small, but nonetheless would take up space, which would be potentially having to, people having to come to get a variance, for example, with a setback, if you had, had something like that.
Do we, do we-
But at the same time, everybody can't deploy rooftop because it depends upon-
Yeah.
-the direction of the sun and the angle of the roof.
And the trees around you.
And the tree cover.
But I thought that David said that these panels are like non-reflective. I mean, they're not, well, either he said they're absorbent, but he said there won't be any off-reflection, like-
No, you shouldn't have lights on your house. They're not getting any sun, so you'd be a mountain.
Trees, trees block it, right, sun.
Right, but you won't put it where you-
Well, that's what he's saying, he's saying not everyone can put these, because maybe your house is covered in trees.
Right, and I, and I totally understand that, and I think that so far in the past, if somebody has wanted, I don't know what the rule has been, if somebody wanted to get their house completely solar-paneled, I know we people who have, and I don't know what the process was, but I thought this initially came to us as someone was saying, what would I be able to do? I want to put a solar, solar panel up in my yard. Based on this, we're saying that you can't if you don't live on an acre. If you live in a subdivision, or if you live in a planned community, you'll never be able to put one of these up.
So my main concern was, and maybe this is a compromise, I don't know, I don't so much have a problem with, if you're in a subdivision, smaller lots, having it in the backyard, but I do have a concern with it being in a side yard, especially if you got like a twenty-foot side yard from your house to the property line, and so does your neighbor, and you had some double-decker, five-hundred-square-foot panel there in the side yard. So more, my concern is more the side yard than the backyard.
Where, David, where in this ordinance do we talk about placement? What, what, what section is it where we talk about where these, these units can be placed?
When we say that it is treated as an accessory use in a side or rear yard where it's been permitted, where it's allowed.
Right, but-
But like, for example, in Sun City, those lots are so small, you're not going to be able to deploy a ground-mounted solar system. You're going to have to use rooftop where you can. You're just not going to have the room for it.
Well, and also because of the closeness of the properties, you're never going to get enough sun, one or the other, of which, that's the individual's prerogative, if they want to put one there and it's only going to get this much sun. But the point of the matter is, I don't think that accessory items should be in the front or on the side. I think that we should follow the same rule, and it should, you should find a place in the rear of your property to do it, but to say that you have to have an acre to do it, I think just defeats the purpose of why we started looking at it in the first place. So that part I'm not just-
Out at Sun City, we're very specific on the view corridor. You're not putting anything in the view corridor? Because we just don't want that as you drive by to look. In the backyard, you can talk about trying to do something, but it's not going to be in the front or in either one of the view corridors to be able to do that.
A good policy for us.
Same thing with where we allow antennas, direct antenna stuff.
Like the DirecTV stuff.
It's got to be on the backside to be able to, there are a few houses that we had to do something with, but almost always, view corridors and front, you're not doing anything, including on the roof.
So we already say that in this ordinance?
I don't, I don't know that.
Yes, the rooftop, rooftop systems now are totally good. There is no acreage requirement, that struck out. So now we're talking about the-
Ground mounted.
-ground mounted on the side or rear of your house. I think a possible compromise that could do this is, if you look on AR-one and all the rest of them, they pretty much all say the same thing. A says shall only be located on lots with a minimum acre, minimum area of two acres.
What page are you on, David? What page are you on?
Three of mine. On the, and then C says shall be allocated in side or rear yards only. As a compromise, you could perhaps strike off A, the minimum acreage, and then put on-
Strike off side.
And strike off side on C, and only have it in the rear yard, and that way it's not an issue, no matter how much acreage you have.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, looking at it now. I found page three. Where are you?
Section five-oh-three, permitted uses. I'm just using the AR-one as an example, but they're pretty much all the same.
Okay. I got, I got, okay.
If you go down to section five-oh-three, C-twenty-one, solar energy ground-mounted systems, the first requirement is A shall only be located on lots with a minimum area of two acres. There again, I had a concern about side yards. Uh, where C says shall be allocated in side or rear yards only. You could solve both by striking off side and only be, allowing them in the rear yard, and then in turn, strike off the acreage requirement on A.
I, it's, you know, at Sun City, we're, the look, we're looking for that view corridor is so people don't start sticking all kinds of stuff up there.
This could only be in the backyard.
Yeah.
Yeah, this says that everything should go in, in the rear, and I think that, I mean, anything that's ground-mounted, no matter what AR residential should not be allowed on the side.
Oh, we're good.
It, it should have to go in the back in, in all of these cases. And if it's ground-mounted, if it's okay for me to do it on a quarter of an acre, it should be okay for somebody else to be, and not have to do it on two acres. So there needs to be some uniformity when you start talking about these ground-mounted, and if it's this size, that's one thing. If it's like two of these, then that's something different, so maybe we can get-
Well, what if your land is like that? What if you're on twenty acres in AR? Do I start to go put it in the backyard? You can't even see my house from the road. You know what I'm saying? Like, I should be able to put that anywhere I want, you know what I'm saying? Like-
Yeah.
You know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's a good point.
I got to put that in the backyard? My, my backyard's in the shade.
Yeah, and you're not getting, yeah, so-
So wouldn't that be by special exception or variance? Yeah, that'd be a variance.
And then you can explain it, this, I've got five acres around it, yeah.
So backyard would keep everybody, if you want to put it anywhere but in the backyard, special exception.
Well, we, we could also put, if you have less than an acre, it's backyard. If it's more than an acre, you know, then it's, then it's back or side. If it's five acres or more, then it's wherever you want, you know what I'm saying?
I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, I'm grabbing those numbers from here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a half an acre, it just, just one?
Yeah, you got it, then it's got to be in the back, because that means you got neighbors close.
Got you, yeah.
Right? But if you're on a full acre, you can be like, where, anywhere else, you can put your shed on the side or in the back.
Okay.
And if you're out in the country and you're, you know what I'm saying? And put it wherever you want.
So it only go, but it only go in the back if you got a half acre?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because, because that means you got neighbors, right?
Okay.
And everybody cares about-
That makes sense.
So one acre and under in the backyard only, no side, no special exception. Above one acre-
Well, anything different would, would require a special.
Anything.
Or variance.
Would require a variance.
So if you have a lar, if you have five acres, you have to still get a variance to get in the front yard?
No, five or more, I would think.
I, I would think that you would want that, simply because if you have, if you have an open space front yard, like some of the neighbors that Ryan has, that you would not want some of those large panels in the front yard, because y'all don't have trees out on some of your redways.
I don't think we want it in the front yard.
I mean, I, I would agree with that, but I also agree with, with James, if you have acreage. But if you also have acreage, you can, you'll have that same ability to get sun in the backyard than in the front.
That's, that's a good variance, that's a good variance candidate, because you could demonstrate if you're trying to save money on electric bill, hardship, if you can't have it in the front with a sunshine.
And anybody that goes in the front yard, request a variance.
Yes.
I can live with that.
So, so bottom line is, the only ordinance revision would be that if it is less than one acre-
But it's backyard.
Then it's, the ground-mounted goes in the rear yard.
Yes.
Um-
Is that right?
Technically, it would be roof-mounted or rear.
Right, the roof-mounted separately, it's on the roll card.
Roof mounted is just permitted.
On, on David's paper, number four, and ours, number fifty-three, section six-oh-four-A, permitted uses, I just saw something where it talks about solar ground-mounted, small-scale. Have we defined that?
Yes, and the definition is that's one to five acres, right? That's, that's still a-
That's a farm.
That's still quite a farm.
Yeah.
And that's not permitted, like without variance.
Okay, this is like in the agro-tourism. So what I'm saying is, what, what is considered a large-scale?
It's, it's defined in the code.
Oh, okay.
Large scale is like twenty more acres.
Give me a second.
They would always need a special exception.
Yeah, anything like that, anything that generates more than your house is going to need a special exception.
Any, any kind of solar farm.
Okay, so, so small-scale is just servicing your immediate living?
No, that's residential yard scale, that's the new definition.
Give me a second. We track the definitions of the model ordinance created by Solar and Municipal Study Committee, and if you'll give me a second so I can get to the code, go through what the definitions are.
Your house, it goes up to one hundred and twenty-five percent of whatever your use level is, and then anything bigger than that is like a small farm, mid-size farm, large-size farm, but that's like a power plant, like I'm, this is to generate power to like sell.
So, I mean, are there some stipulations?
You've got, solar is a-
Those are all-
Solar is a clean renewable means of generation, but it is the least efficient-
Yes.
-in the use of land.
Which again is why-
A megawatt can take five to ten acres, depending upon what the lay is and depending upon what the, uh-
But then how many, how many acres worth of rooftops in town are, you know what I'm saying? So that's why it's like, yeah, if you want to put it on your roof of your building, have at it, no one else is using that roof. Whereas if we're going to cut down this two-thousand-acre forest to put up, to make green energy, it's like, what, you're cutting out a forest to make green energy? Like, listen to the, listen to yourself say that out loud, you know what I mean? Like, that's dumb idea.
Well, everything's a trade-off in energy. There's no such thing as a perfect energy generation source.
Come on, Thorium.
Right.
We'll get there one day.
It sounds to me like we've still got a couple issues in, in this document.
If, 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 this has been sitting for like three years. If y'all would approve this with an amendment that you just said, by second reading, we'll have the final to you, so we can go on further.
That's, that's good by me. Quinn, you okay?
I can easily do that.
Ryan, he okay with that?
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay, so, all right. David, you have what you need to be able to?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I almost made a motion, I have.
All right. Uh, number four.
Three.
Three, we just finished three.
Sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, discussion on the proposed text amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinances, Appendix Four, Zoning, adding various solar energy system principles and accessory uses to permitted use, sections five-oh-three, six-oh-three.
You did that one as well.
Yeah, we discussed both at the same time.
Item number five, discussion of application twenty-five-dash-zero-one-Z, Mark Anderson, owner, twenty-one-twenty-five Jackson Road, Griffin, Georgia, two-zero-two-two-three, located in land lot two-two-six of the third land district, parcel number two-one-two-zero-one-zero-seven-B, consisting of two-point-two acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone from R-two, single-family residential, to AR-one, agricultural residential, to be able to use the property for more agricultural purposes, specifically beekeeping and cultivation.
Sold. Anybody got any problems? Sounds great, next one.
Item number six.
You want to go to AR, you got it.
That's exactly, I almost never see it that way. Discussion of application twenty-five-dash-zero-one-V, Mark Anderson, owner, two-twenty-one-twenty-five Jackson Road, Griffin, Georgia, two-zero-two-two-three, located in land lot two-two-six of the third land district, parcel number two-one-two-zero-one-zero-seven-B, consisting of two-point-two acres. The applicant is requesting variance in the lot size due to rezoning. The applicant is requesting variance in the lot size due to rezoning.
I- is AR just not normally two point two acres? Is that the issue?
No, it's a minimum three, so that's why you need the variance if you're gonna rezone.
And what's, it's two point two?
He's just under it by about point seven, something like that.
So, so he can't go to, technically, he can't go to R two because he doesn't have enough acreage.
He, he can't go to AR one. He's going from.
From R two to AR one.
Yes, ma'am.
Need y'all to approve this variance as well.
That's the.
I, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, you wanna go to AR.
A lot didn't actually change in any way, shape or form, just changed its color on the path.
This, is his residence?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, no, yeah, I'm fine with it.
He's supposed to keep eat.
Ryan, you okay?
I'm fine with it.
Reginald, you okay?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. Item number seven. Discuss, discussion on the application twenty-four dash zero three S. Uh, Stuart Boyce, Woodland Church, two two nine zero and two three zero zero. North, North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, approximately a hundred and thirty-two point two five total acres. Located in land lot one 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 of the second land district, parcel number two oh four zero one zero zero one. And two, and two zero four zero one zero two zero. The applicant is seeking a special exception to develop religious campground per section five oh three B fifteen.
Is this, is this gonna be, uh, agrotourism or?
Yes, sir. It's just, uh, confined to just the church activities such as retreats and things of that nature.
Now, let's, let's, this is different than the campground issue other places. This is.
Much different.
Specific issues right now, correct? Gl- Glenn, you have an issue?
Yes, 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 yes. And one of the things that I was concerned about and wanted to ask them was to. Um, first of all, to require them to use the least amount of impervious surface. Um, for this, I know they have to have some paving coming off the road, but as they go into the development. The least amount of pavement, the better. The other thing is that this church was not required. To have a, a, a cell, D cell lane when they were initially permitted because we were in the housing bust and we knew money was short. But now that they're adding this to. Their repertoire of things that they do, I think that they need to be required to talk to DOT about. Preparing proper turning lanes and A cell, D cell lanes for that.
Now, this is buildings. We're not talking about campers coming, RVs coming in or anything like this, correct?
Yes, sir. The approval conditions, uh, restrict that. It is, there will be some, and in your. Uh, staff report is examples of the cabins. They will have permanent foundations. And again, this is defined in our code very specifically, a religious campground, retreat or meeting place used for the conduct of religious worship, discussion, consultation. Which they include recreational activities, outdoor nature and overnight accommodations. A church can be part of this. So this is not open to the general public. It'd be just for church-sponsored events or another church coming in for a retreat or something along those lines. Not just for your average person that wants to camp there for an indeterminate amount of time for unspecified reason. So this is not to be confused with other campgrounds we have discussed. It's already defined in the code. And I think the approval conditions kinda frame it up nicely to what they can and can't do. Um, I don't think that's the pastor's intent anyway to have it open or whatever. Um, has a very specific use and. Uh, he wants to keep it that way.
Okay, campground's a big issue, you know, uh, other issue that's going on. Alright, so, uh, David, your recommendation is to approve?
Yes, sir, with the conditions.
You're okay with this, uh?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Alright, any other? Alright, let's move on.
The more camping, the merrier.
Mr. Chairman, it is sufficiently different from the upcoming commercial facility. To just provide us the ability to distinguish.
Thank you. I wanna make sure everybody gets the difference in the wording between what we're trying to do here and there.
I'll be happy to add, Commissioner Flowers Taylor's things about minimizing impervious and A cell, D cell lane, if you wish.
What, would you mind going over really quick what those conditions were that the planning committee wanted them to have?
You read them out loud?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for them.
Alright, uh, should the board choose to approve, following minimum approval conditions shall apply. Number one, no vehicle parking shall occur in the right of way. Two, permanent cabins shall be limited to no more than a total of ten. Shall be located out of the stream buffer setbacks and flood zone. Advocate may ask for more permanent cabins in the future. Be approved at discretion of the planning commission and board of commissioners. Three, permanent cabins are subject to all septic and water permit requirements by the environmental health department. Four, permanent cabins shall only be used or occupied for participants in specific religious retreat events during those events. Five, the church shall provide a liability insurance policy. Six, the splash pad should be fenced as per swimming pool fence requirements. Seven, the use of ropes is the ropes course that's a little bit north of the building, shall be supervised by church staff. Uh, eight, the final site layout should be subject to approval by the fire marshal. Nine, access to cabin area should be gated and restricted to general public between retreat events. Fire marshal should be granted twenty-four hour access to any gates. Ten, walking trails should not be used by the general public after dark. Eleven, there should be a twenty-five foot wide natural buffer preserved on all side and rear property lines. Twelve, no, uh, RVs or pop-up campers allowed on the property, only cabins with permanent foundations. Parentheses, concrete slab. Thirteen, no clear cutting on the property, of the property will be allowed in conjunction with construction of the campground areas. And fourteen, extra, any extra driveway to the campground from North McDonough Road requires G dot approval. Then you add your suggestions of minimizing impervious in the A cell, D cell lane.
Well, why? I just wanna talk this through. Why is number twelve on there? I mean, I get why we don't want permanent RVs or permanent pop-up campers, but if. For example, if I take my boy scouts to North Georgia for the week, and they're all sleeping in tents, but I wanna sleep in my travel trailer. But then I'm gone after the week. I don't, I don't get what the issue is.
Based on our.
Now, if I'm, if I'm there and I'm gonna work in Tennessee for six months and I'm living out of my travel trailer, that's a different story.
Just based on our discussions about the other kind of campground, this was suggested to differentiate it from that.
This is just for religious purposes?
Sure, but if they're coming to.
Yep.
You know, we're gonna have a summer camp, and you've got some elderly folks that wanna come, but they don't wanna stay in a tent. You know, when I'm sixty, I wanna be like, nowhere tent camping for me, you know, but I still wanna get out there with the youth. You know, but I, again, I'm not staying for more than five days, seven days, you know what I'm saying?
I should've, I should've said in there, no tents either. So basically, no, no temporary.
Temporary, yeah, shelter.
Only permanent foundation. Should really, I should add the word tents in there.
Yeah, this is.
I mean, if that's, if that's what these guys specifically want, but like.
Yes.
Slide it.
This is, uh.
But you.
Like the four H camp, yeah.
Summer camp. This is some, uh, schools, I mean, church summer camp to me. Uh, this is what I'm seeing here. These are big buildings. Not, uh, tents pop up doing stuff like that.
Right, where there's an adult sleeping in the cabin.
Yes.
Only using permanent, uh, buildings also limits your amount of people gonna be there. You don't have a bunch of tents spilling off into the woods with. Unexpected people.
I, I, to, to meet James's issue, if they wanna come in and ask for that as a spe- special exception or something for. Uh, one or two times, you know, or they're, they're bringing in a whole bunch. Uh, this time between, uh, March sixteenth and March twenty-second. We're bringing in and we're allowing, uh, pop-ups to come in in tents. Uh, okay.
I guess they could do a special event permit.
Yes.
Is it, the, the language difference here, the semantical difference is the, is. When my, like when my wife and I first went camping for the first time, like I'm bringing like. Backpack and like tents. She's going, what are you bringing all this stuff for? I'm like, I'm going camping. What are you talking about? And she's like, no, I'm bringing like an electric skillet and stuff. I'm like, how are you gonna get that? Cause her idea of camping is this, you know what I mean? Like my idea of camping is, we're going on the fifty mile hike on the Appalachian Trail, you better carry it on your back, you know, like it's.
Where are the bathrooms?
But we're, yeah, 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 but we're using the word camping still, you know, so when I hear, hey, campground, I think, well, you're going camping, right?
I'm okay with what we've got here, uh, for this.
What, what's in this to protect the county? I know there's. And I know it's gonna sound crazy, but I'm just kinda thinking outside the box. What if this preacher? Wanted to do some kinda like behavioral health type camp and started housing people back there. Even though it's still considered a five oh one C, it's nonprofit, but they're bringing in book hoos of money to. Kinda watch our, I mean, how, how are we gonna be able to watch this and monitor this?
So number, number four, um, talks about, it doesn't give a specific length to stay, but it says it's only to be used and occupied. For specific religious retreat events, so that would not be an open-ended.
Yeah, that's the, that's the only sentence in that whole ordinance I see or hear. Yeah, that's the only thing that's protecting us, that one little sentence. That's, that's. That's not my only concern. I mean, I've just seen stuff kinda go bad like this.
Yeah, maybe we put in there, like, no guest or visitor shall stay longer than ten days at a time or so, you know what I'm saying? Like.
Without, without prior approval of somehow, because it's.
If, if they intend to do a treatment facility, it is no longer a religious campground.
That's correct.
And I would argue, Ryan, that they are in violation of the code. For having some type of treatment facility there.
In state law.
At, correct. Now, the zoning procedures act used to have a provision that if you wanted to do a rehab facility. You had to come in nine months before it would ever come up to you for a vote. Now, that got pulled out.
The rope is gone?
That got pulled out in, uh, House Bill fourteen oh five. But nonetheless, the use definitions are still there. So my, I would argue it has morphed into something that was not approved, which puts them in violation of the code.
And that, that's just what scared, like the, the Three Rivers or whatever, the, the group homes and stuff. I mean, if they, if they spend one night a week and have a little sermon or something. I don't wanna be considered a religious camp, you know, and then still be doing that.
And if you will look in the zoning ordinance, we have definitions of things like group homes and. Uh, care facilities and so forth.
I believe I heard one of our commissioners make a comment that, uh, they would like to see at least one toilet. Uh, area inside of each of these cottages. Is that also a condition that you would like to impose?
Glenn, you've had the most experience recently in doing this.
People don't like to go to camp and then have to get up and go out to go to the bathroom. And.
Yeah, they're, they're in, the cabins in Rock Eagle. But like, they're not at, uh, uh, Camp Thunder.
It didn't used to be.
Yeah, like at Camp Thunder, you have to walk out.
Okay, yeah, that was back when Nina Penta and Santa Maria was still selling. But yeah, I would make, like, and I was gonna ask about the septic system because, um. Yeah, I'm, I, I just think that it lends itself to people having to walk outdoors at night, walk outdoors and inclement weather. Um, just. Get up and put on all your clothes to go outdoors, go to the bathroom or the shower, so.
So I could, I could tweak approval condition three to say minimum one toilet per cabin.
Would you be okay with a common, um, restroom area that had a shower? As a part of that restroom area as a common area?
If, I, I, I don't care what you call it, as long as it's in the building that the people are in. I just, I just don't, they're in the woods already.
I'm sure that's not, it's not there because of the expense.
Well, we, yeah.
But our issue is, uh, we wanna try to do this right.
And, you know.
Other than four H camp, I've never camped in a cabin that had them built in. I mean, four H camp had them built in, but like. Boy Scout camp, junior leadership training, J L T, you know, that kinda stuff like.
Man, we, we, we've got a church camp. I just came from this weekend. I bet you that building. Each of the cabins are about twelve by twelve, sleep about eight. There's a room for a stand-up shower, a toilet. And then this much area for the camp counselor.
I, I've seen it both ways, that's all.
So, and, and, and then my other experience with younger campers are they are, they're very funny about taking their clothes off in front of strangers.
Big issues.
So that gives them a place for privacy. So that's why I think it's important for those restrooms to.
Everybody okay with that? Putting that inside, making it, uh, uh, it. Go ahead, James.
It, it, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, I'm not like against. I'm not, I'm for it out of the way.
This is boys versus girls stuff, yes. You're gonna like, yes.
Well, no, it, it, this depends on the flavor of the camp you're going to. I mean, again, I've gone, uh, you know, I go camping once a year and. Cabins in Canada and you gotta hike to get to a toilet, you know what I mean? Like, there's not, there's not even a bathhouse. Um, but on the other hand, like four H camps, there's toilets and showers in, you know, the room and. And their, their cabins at Rock Eagle are like, like a leader's bedroom and then like bathhouse and then like two rooms, the sleep aid each, you know what I'm saying? There's like a central shower.
We've, we've stayed in those, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but it, Boy Scout camps and stuff, there's, you gotta, you gotta walk out and.
Be outdoors.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're, we're.
You know what I mean?
We're all saying, put it inside. Tell them to put it inside.
Yeah.
At least one toilet inside each cabin.
Um, and may I ask you?
Let's make sure. Are you talking toilet? Are you talking toilet stand-up shower?
I, I'm saying bathroom.
Full bathroom.
Full bath.
Mm-hmm.
Full bath. Yeah, I wanted to.
They can make it however they want to, but, but you can do your ablutions inside the building. Um.
She's ablution.
This. Is this okay?
Okay.
Um.
Well, you've just lived that life, so that's what's important.
The other thing is that my, why do we want them to put a fence around the splash pad?
Uh, just reliability purposes.
Attracting nuisance.
Okay.
Slip and fall. In theory, you can drown in the inch of water.
It's the same as like, if you have a pool or anything in your house, you gotta put a, your backyard, you gotta put.
Would we do, we're talking about splash pads in our county.
We would place a, a fenced area around our pool as well for, uh, liability purposes. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm just trying to think, do I, the ones that I've been in at Henry County, I went to the one at Rock Springs. I can't remember if that. I don't think they have, have a fence around theirs. And the one at Christ Church.
It, it's got a wrought iron fence around the outside.
Christ Church does. It has like.
Oh, yeah, cause you have to open the fence to get in there. But, yeah, I was just wondering.
The one at Rock Springs does.
Why?
Yeah, they, they're carrying a lot of liability.
Okay, I mean, I know that it's close to the road where they're proposing to put it. Uh, no, on here, where they, on their plan. But, yeah, I was just wondering.
I'm having, I'm for a fence.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I, I didn't know if we were trying to keep the outsiders from coming in because it's hot and it will be water. Or are we trying to keep wild animals out or?
Dogs?
Yeah.
Bit of, bit of.
Okay, alright, that's it.
Alright, any other, anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. Item number eight, discussion of application twenty-four dash thirty-two Z. Thomas D. Wilson, Jr., at all, Minerva Land LLC, three, three, two, zero. McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, approximately five hundred and sixty-two point seven four three total acres. Located in land lot fifteen, one fifteen, one sixteen, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three. One forty-seven, one forty-eight, and one forty-nine of the second land district, parcel number two oh one. Zero one zero zero one and two zero one zero one zero zero one A. And two zero one zero one zero zero one B. And two zero one zero one zero zero one D. And two zero 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 one zero zero one. And two zero 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 one zero zero six. And two zero 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 one zero zero one B. And two zero one zero one zero zero one F. The application, applicant is requesting a rezoning from R two and AR one. To Village Node District.
I apologize for all those parcel numbers.
Do you want to talk about all these together, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be more than happy to read the, the other three into the record if you would like from me too.
Thank you.
Uh, number nine, discussion of the application twenty-four thirty-one S, Thomas D. Wilson, Jr., at all. Minerva, uh, uh, Minerva Land LLC, thirty-three twenty North McDonough Road.
Do we need to, this is a workshop. Do we need to read that for, do you need to have it read? Because this is a workshop. When we get into the regular meeting, we'll have to do that. But do we need to read it?
I don't know that you have to right now, but let's go ahead and do it.
Okay.
So it's clear what we're talking about.
No worries. Uh, thirty-three twenty North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, approximately five hundred sixty-two point seven four three total acres. Located in land lot one forty-seven of the second land district, parcel number two zero one zero one zero zero one D Delta. The applicant is requesting special exception for an age targeted, age fifty-five and older living facility to be permitted, possibly including. Independent living facility. The applicant is requesting special exception for an age-targeted, age fifty-five and older living facility to be permitted, possibly including independent living facility, assisted living facility, personal care home, nursing home, or senior's apartment, which shall be subject to a maximum height limitation of sixty feet with an approved fire sprinkler system. Item number ten, discussion on application twenty-four one three V B, Thomas D. Wilson, Jr., at all. Minerva Land LLC, thirty-three twenty North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, approximately five hundred sixty-two point seven four three total acres located in land lot one fifteen, one sixteen, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, one forty-seven, one forty-eight, and one forty-nine of the second land district. Parcel numbers two zero one, zero one, zero zero one, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one A, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one B, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one D, two zero zero, zero one, zero zero one, two zero zero, zero one, zero zero six, two zero zero, zero one, zero zero one B, and two zero one, zero one, zero zero one F. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow a minimum single-family house size of twelve hundred square feet if the dwellings are age-targeted for individuals age fifty-five and older. Item number eleven, discussion on application twenty-four one three V D, Thomas D. Wilson, Jr., at all. Minerva Land LLC, thirty-three twenty North McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, approximately five hundred sixty-two point seven four three total acres located in land lot one fifteen, one sixteen, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, one forty-seven, one forty-eight, and one forty-nine of the second land district. Parcel numbers two zero one, zero one, zero zero one, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one A, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one B, two zero one, zero one, zero zero one D, two zero zero, zero one, zero zero one, two zero zero, zero one, zero zero six, two zero, zero, zero one, zero zero one B, and two zero one, zero one, zero zero one F. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow a maxim, uh, sorry, a minimum single-family lot frontage in lot width of forty feet if the dwellings are age-targeted for individuals age fifty-five and older.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
All right. Director?
All right, um, so right off the bat, just to, for clarification, the rezoning and the successive variance and special exception is gonna be based off the most current site plan, which you received, uh, last week, I believe, uh, dated March nineteenth, which shows same lot yield, same general layout, with the exception of some circulation with some roads changing and also adding back in the Amelia Road, uh, back entrance or exit to that main pod. Uh, you guys have this as well as a document that showed what changed since the last um, concept plan, uh, about a month or so ago. So I will be basing this off of that. Um, a lot of information, a lot of facts, a lot of opinions, lots of moving parts of this. I'm gonna start from the forty thousand foot view and work our way down, if you don't mind. I do think it's important to talk about the comprehensive plan and the future land use map with this right off the bat. Um, this entire area of this development is what's known as the Sun City Heron Bay character area. I'm gonna read a couple of things from that, from the comp plan for you. The vision of the Sun City Heron Bay character area will provide unique housing concepts to serve the needs and desires of a multi-generational population. Area will integrate recreational spaces, commercial developments to allow for easy access to service and amenities. Uh, the Sun City Care, Heron Bay character area supports master plan developments intended to accommodate a mix of residential, uh, active adult community, single-family detached, commercial, and recreation uses, uh, primarily characterized by moderate-density detached, single-family uses. Um, character areas defined by large master plan communities that are primarily residential, but also have the potential to accommodate some commercial uses. Tech space, the primary future land uses, among others, in this character area are moderate to high-density detached, single-family, also accessible neighborhood, commercial. Compatible active zoning districts in this, uh, um, character area are R one, R one A, R two, R four, R five, P D D, active adult, uh, uh, the other P D D, and then B N, Village Node, which is proposed to be rezoned too. So to clarify or reiterate, B N, Village Node, is a compatible zoning district in this area. The design principles, the density intensity is one to four density units per acre. Uh, this development is right in the middle there, a little bit less than three density units per acre. Also talks about green space, which is provided, um, connectivity, and then, of course, public water, private sewer. So I just wanna reiterate to you from the comp plan what is said about this character area. Again, you see the layout before you, the lot yield has not changed from what it was before. Uh, single-family total number of lots is one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven when this is fully built. Does not include the two hundred and fifty units for the, uh, senior facility that is part of the special exception that you'll hear about as well. Um, there are, um, fifty-five plus demographic of lots and house sizes intended for this. Uh, those will be mainly along the most northern part of this development, including the Amelia Road portion. The other ones are a mix of fifty-foot wide lots, which the code already allows, and sixty-foot wide lots, uh, pretty much, uh, mirrors what is the lot mix of Sun City by and large. There's a forty, a fifty, and a sixty, uh, from what I understand from Sun City, so this pretty much mirrors that mix. Also, a, a mix of house sizes as well, ranging from the minimum twelve hundred for the fifty-five plus demographic to eighteen hundred and twenty-one hundred for other areas, so there's the mix there. The commercial part you'll see on the plan is right there, uh, in the middle of the North McDonough Road portion of this, which is most of the development is on North McDonough Road. Um, also, the senior assisted living area, which we'll get into in a minute with a special exception, has road access, interior road access to that, to the other parts of the development. I will stop there and see if y'all have any questions at this point. I'm sure there's plenty of questions.
All right, from the forty thousand foot level, it's all good. It meets all our requirements.
It meets the lines of the comp plan and the future land use map.
Okay. All right.
Um, I have, I have a question about our ordinance regarding townhomes.
Okay.
What are the parking requirements?
Um, I'll have to look at that, but the townhome portion of this is no longer in this. This is all single-family detached, no townhomes.
And that is everything even that is on the east side of one fifty-five? Because according to the legend on this map, it is still on there.
They had a, they had a separate variance application, which was, uh, A V or V A for the townhomes, and that's been withdrawn.
Yes. The area to the west there of North McDonough, um, those lots over there, the yellow ones, used to be townhomes of the very first concept plan back in the fall. That has since been taken out since then, and those are all single-family detached houses.
They look, I mean, the rendering looks really small, um, which makes me think that they're small, but that, based on this, that's forty-two foot wide by a hundred and twenty-five foot deep, correct?
The forty-foot lots, Commissioner, are the ones in orange?
So I'm looking at this thing here, if this is wrong, and the legend says that that the gold lots are forty-two feet by one hundred and twenty-five, and there are a hundred and ninety-eight of them.
Correct.
And then it says right below there that the darker gold is twenty-four something townhomes, and that's two hundred and ten units. And so they're a different color than the single-family detached, so I'm, my question is.
That may have been from the original staff report.
You know, I'm.
When, what's the date on that plan?
Uh, August second, twenty twenty-four.
There's a, there's a new plan dated, that is dated today, where the townhomes have been deleted. And on that plan, the ones that are on the plan in an orange, or as you said, a gold color, those are the forty-foot lots. Now, that forty-foot distinction comes in later as well, and it's important, but.
So as this had, as this had changed several times, the concept plan, I had built on to the end of the staff report and provided updates on what changed, so.
Christopher, is that the current, you've got the current plan up now?
Okay, sorry about that.
Yes, yes. Correct.
Okay, okay, now I'm, I'm, I'm working with you. What I, one of the things that we, we talked about earlier, it's one of our meetings before, was the traffic, the traffic one to one fifty-five. And I see here that there are a proposed three, one, two, three entry and accesses off one fifty-five. I know that one of them is a main entrance. It says main entrance. There, there, and there. The, the main one comes off of Johnson Road, which kinda goes directly into the other development that I was just asking a question about. And the other one is like the, comes in with, meets the road that comes out of, um.
North of there. You're right, you're talking about.
I wanna call them Baymont, but you know what I'm talking about, Grayson Park.
Yes.
And then there's another road of, which, I mean, I kindly see how it does come through and it provides connectivity from one end to the other. I'm, I'm just, I, I just, there's a lot of people coming out on the one fifty-five, and at no point, I know that we're saying that at some point there will be an application for a, um.
Street light, for a stoplight.
For a street light.
So the Johnson Road intersection with that main, the further south entrance to it will be the signalized intersection. The next, uh, entrance up, as I understand it, is a right-in, right-out, no left turns, and then the other one is a, uh, normal intersection.
Okay.
And, and the number of entrances, um, I actually went back and, and checked with our fire department. Um, the, the number is going to be consistent with the life safety requirements for this subdivision.
Okay. I, I don't like it, but I'm, I'm saying okay because I'm thinking fifty-five, sixty-five miles per hour when that, when cars hit that spot, even if it is, and a right in, and then a right out, you still got cars coming fast.
Now, this is supposed to be one of our major north-south arteries.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I understand that this is a main thoroughfare, um.
Signal will busted up some, the speed, but.
When in, in the conditions we drafted, uh, we can explain those in more detail, but with regard to road improvements, we provided that.
Yeah, I saw that.
The developer will install, excel, or decel in compliance with what DOT tells them to do.
Um, and, and then, I mean, I see that there's some connectivity from, um, from Amelia Road and that subdivision, and, and I think we, I saw my red where there was gonna be a marked crosswalk where the entrance would be off of Amelia Road.
Yes.
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 So you could literally walk from one, that end of the development to the other. I'm, I'm looking at this one street. And then there is, I, I used to could see better than this. There is a road for connectivity that will come through the senior assisted that will also get you into the other amenities areas.
Correct.
Okay, well.
When your arms are just too short.
I'm, don't know if I need it here. So that, um, I think that's my question about that, um.
All right, while we're covering roads, so, uh, we believe, David, we believe that the road situation is an acceptable standard.
You were having improvements on North McDonough Road, yes?
I mean, with the sig- signalized and with the right-in, right-out, all of those, we believe it's acceptable.
And the cul-de-sacs are the full-size for our fire trucks to turn around in, like our ordinance says, right?
Uh, they will be.
Coming out for smaller cul-de-sacs.
No, they have not asked for a smaller cul-de-sac, so it will have to be to the standard y'all mentioned before, the.
Okay. All right, so roads, check roads off, which was a big issue for me, okay?
Mr. Chairman, they will be in compliance with what DOT tells them to do.
Uh, yeah, uh, it's just, as Commissioner Flowers Taylor said, this is, uh, getting to be, you know, it's supposed to be a high-speed avenue artery for us, and it's getting to be, we're gonna put a, a roundabout down at, uh, Jackson. Uh, every two miles or so, we're gonna have, uh, some kind of, uh, thing, okay?
Also, in the conditions, it, it specifies several improvements to Amelia Road, so.
Yeah, we're talking about, uh, paving, uh, and in east, uh, decellin, uh, doing it?
Correct.
All right. Are we talk, we're not talking super paving?
No, this is, uh, uh, everything we're doing right now is super paving for, uh, truck traffic. Um, even though Amelia is a chip and seal road, uh, there are occasions when we have commercial trucks traveling that road, uh, because they are following the regular person's GPS up that road because I seventy-five is, uh, is impeded.
All right, where does the, where does the, uh, paving go on the map? I'm looking at the map up here.
It comes to the end of the property, the.
Right, the black, the black line to black line.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Wherever this development fronts Amelia.
Will there be sidewalks on Amelia? Did I read that?
There is a com- approval condition for that, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what about on one fifty-five?
Same thing.
And we have had the conversation with G-Dot and informed them that, uh, from this point forward, all state highways will require, um, sidewalk capability.
Let, let me just ask you a question. So the, the develop, the part of the development that's a single detached homes that's on the eastern side of one fifty-five, is it, it's not the same development as is on the other side of the street? Is, is this all just one?
Yes, it's all zone, well, I assume you approve it, it would be, all be zone village.
So, so those people that live on the east side have the ability to use the amenities that are across the street?
Yes.
Okay.
This is all one big village now?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I was just trying to look for connectivity for them, but it's basically gonna be Johnson Road, and then you'll have to cross at the intersection to be able to have access, whether you're walking, but pedaling, golf carting, or whatever.
In, in sidewalks in this particular area, you would think would not be used, but, um, uh, I have more, I have on more than one occasion been sitting at one fifty-five and watching our, our young people get off of the school bus, the Spalding County School Bus, and walk into Grayson Park. So, uh, we already have school kids in that area taking advantage of our school system, and i- it's gonna be important for them to have some way to traverse safely back and forth along that corridor, as it would be anyone else.
And to get to the commercial area.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, okay.
All right, now, we're still at the, uh, in your briefing, David, we're still at the forty thousand feet, right? Or are you ready to go?
We can go below if you want to.
Inside, let's, let's zoom in, uh, on those surface streets, those new surface streets that the county will, I'm assuming the county will then take ownership of all those surface streets?
Yes, they'll be public.
Sidewalks and curbs.
And they all have sidewalks and curbs.
That's correct.
We get them all. That's a good story and a bad story.
And, and the stormwater system?
Uh, it, it has gone through the D R I for the stormwater, and our stormwater consultant has, um, reviewed this along with our engineer.
A little bit.
So this would be.
This is more the construction stage.
Yeah, they, they do not get engaged at that level until you make the approval.
Until the, like, for the plat approval, because right now, we're just getting this.
Construction pose.
That's correct.
Okay, uh, David, let's talk about, uh, Henry County Water Authority. They're not in our county, of course. Uh, they, uh, as I remember, they wrote something about, uh, opposition to some of this. Where are we with all that?
So the, the developer, and there's a several, uh, there's two approval conditions in here that pertain to their dialogue with Henry County Water Authority and desire to see certain things, uh, with the development. They, we have included those in our approval conditions, um, trying to be a, a good neighbor. Um, therefore, of course, cannot enforce their standards in our county, um, telling us where to develop stuff and where not to. There is also some dialogue about, um, a dam breach inundation zone, which I was provided some material for. I did a, um, quick analysis of that, um. I did a, um, quick analysis of that, um, as you have this document, showing in theory of the dam or the breach, which zones in pink will be flooded by this, um. So I put that on the map of, um, the concept plan, and the areas in pink, if I'll show you the outline of those, I think I sent this to the county manager to send to you guys. The lots are outside of the pink inundation areas for this development, I kind of superimposed the boundaries of the pink onto this plan, and this was designed in mind for that, you can see where there is green space areas and fingers of this pink going up there, those are correspond with green space areas and buffers on this plan, so that should not be a problem based on this flood inundation map we are provided.
All right, okay, recharge protection?
So groundwater recharge is obviously underground below us, um. The most polluting things of groundwater are our septic systems at our houses, releasing all the household waste directly into field lines and going directly to aquifers and underground water, um. I like farmers, they're my heroes, but the other most polluting thing about groundwater recharge is livestock on farms, um, our Brandon, our stormwater guy also goes out and collects E. coli samples and all that, they're always very high around farms. Uh, they're also high around, uh, septic areas, so this, um, development will be on a closed-loop water and sewer system, no septic. So it will not be leaching into the groundwater like your septic, well, septic systems do. So that will not have that problem of the groundwater being affected, so.
Any, I'm going through my list of things people have talked to me about, just so you know, uh, watershed district protection?
So again, the Water Authority cannot regulate what we do down here, but the, the buffers that they require, and again, these are having to do with septic lots, mostly not sewer lots, but nevertheless, the extended buffers, the two-hundred-foot buffers have been applied to this concept plan, so.
Stormwater runoff?
So there is concern about this, especially on Amelia Road, uh, if you look at the concept plan, and there again, as Commissioner Dutton says, these need to be fleshed out more if this gets approved at the construction and plat stage, but, uh, each pod there has its own stormwater management system, so. And this takes, every time you pave something, it brings more rainwater, you collect the water, you release it at a rate of equal to or less than what it was before, so that's all stormwater detention ponds are designed for that, these will be no exception, so.
Wetlands and river buffer?
So these have been very amply protected by those extra, um, buffers, um, any pockets of wetlands will have to be accounted for during the, construction stage, might require a four or four permit from Army Corps of Engineers, but by and large, most of those are confined to the, um, open space, green space areas shown on the concept plan.
Trail system and private property concerns?
Um, zoning does not really govern this, there was a request by a citizen to, um, provide some fencing along the trails, if this was approved and people were walking along the trail system, it kind of comes close to the backs of certain properties, especially on Amelia Road, they're wanting to see if there could possibly be some fencing along the land back there, um, this would concern. You look at the pod that's on the very top in the middle, this would concern the south side of that, some fencing along those areas, um. We could possibly entertain a condition about that, but that's not, right now, not in the approval conditions.
Okay, okay.
Who suggested putting a fence there?
A citizen I met with.
But, but that is undisturbed green space, right? That, that is not.
Right, and a fence would not really disturb it all that much, they were just concerned if somebody got lost or maybe even intentionally walking from one of the trails on there for recreation and going on their property.
All right, uh, sewer system, this is, uh, coming out of, uh, community service.
Yes, sir.
Uh, to be able to do this whole thing, uh, so we're eliminating, uh, septic tanks, uh, is there an issue of being able to get under, uh, sixteen?
It will have to, oh, one fifty-five.
You mean one fifty-five?
One fifty-five.
I mean, no, excuse me, not sixteen, oh, one fifty-five?
It will have to have a DRT board permit.
All right.
Um, my concern with this is that, um, one of the, one of the questions that was on, one of the thousands of questions that came, was about the community sewer and the community sewer trustee. That is not settled yet, and while I would not think of letting it be a reason why I would not support this, I, I just feel like with part of the complaints being we're adding too much housing and our infrastructure doesn't match, as a county commissioner, I don't want to be the trustee. And we're, we're, we've been made to be the trustee, and I just feel like they need to get that fixed, I mean, it, they need to assign somebody because God forbid that there's some failure, we've already voted, we don't want to be the one to have to do anything. So, you know, I, I'm sure that they have figured out that they have enough capacity to do this, and all the other properties that are on Timon Road, but they're not here yet, and I, I'm just not comfortable, I mean, I don't know that we can, you know, make a stipulation that they, that, you know, if, if it's passed, you need to, y'all need to get this straight X, Y, Z at a certain amount of time, but I'm just, I'm just, I'm just very uncomfortable with the fact that we're still the trustee and we don't know who the sewer trustee is going to be for community sewer.
Yeah, that's, that's a big deal, I think.
That's a big deal, yes, all right, I'm running, still running through my list, any infrastructure?
Mr. Chairman, can I comment on the, uh, number of houses and the rate of houses just for a second? Because that has come up, um, it is over eleven hundred houses have approved, um, for some documents that the developer provided, they're only planning on doing about fifty a year, so it would not be all at once, um, I know there's some, also been comments made in various members of the public about too much housing and thousands of houses being approved, the, by and large, the vast majority of those houses are in Sun City. Um, there's only about half the twenty-some-odd pods that have been developed so far, so there's a lot more to go. So if this is true about the fifty houses per year in this development, um, by contrast, I do fifty, fifty house permits every two months for Sun City, so it's a big difference in the rate and number of houses, so just want to put that out there.
I'm hoping that the applicant today, tonight will show that so everybody can see it in a graphic numbers form, uh.
Well, I mean, my, my, my statement wasn't, I mean, I'm very happy that the plan is for it to be, to be phased in, um, and I wouldn't have a problem if there were more than fifty houses a year, I mean, I, I can't tell them how to spend their money. But the fact is that we have multiple, uh, pods and other developments that are on Timon Road that are big, and when you start adding all those numbers up with the potential of what we, we will be adding up into this village node, that's the, I think that's a concern that many citizens have, have verbalized, is, is not that we're adding these extra, because we, if it were just this, yeah, over the next five years, we could get our infrastructure together, no problem, but it's this other unknown number of how many thousands is it that's already in the plan, that concerns me about, first of all, about the capacity for community sewer, and then secondly, about the fact that we're in limbo after we have tried to relinquish ourselves from being the trustee, and now we are de- by default, still it.
Right.
So, so, like I said.
All right.
That's my drag right now.
That, that seems like something that needs to get fixed before.
Yes, it, it's got to get fixed, do you see any infrastructure deficiencies? As programmed now?
Uh, based on the information I've been provided.
Uh, I'm going through my list, it's, if you have a problem, I, you know, you've got to speak up and say, hold it, I can't do this, all right, pollution concerns?
Um, so the concern was about litter, I mean, we can control litter as we go with code enforcement, but I can't make people not litter, but again, the other pollution concern, the groundwater recharge areas, I think we've covered that already.
Okay. Uh, sorry, just, uh, the Griffin gun proximity, a gun club proximity, uh, we, we're, the plan is for everybody who, when they buy their home, signs off on something that says, we know that there's a gun club, as opposed to what's happened before with, uh, Cherokee Rose.
So, I, I hear what you're saying, and i- if the applicant felt that they wanted to do something, that's fine. But when you buy stuff, it's buyer beware, you need to do your homework.
Well.
So I just don't feel like.
Hey, when they come, we're going to go.
Yeah, that's.
Well, yeah, hey, they can come and talk to me, but I'm saying if I had done my homework where I'm living now, I wouldn't be here in the railroad track and the train at night, because I'm. So, so my, my point is that I hear what you're saying, and I think that it's, you know, if there were consideration to say, okay, yeah, we can do, you know, whatever, but really, you just, you, you need to get on Google and see what's around.
Legally, the gun club would be protected, they were there first, and there's a principle called coming to the nuisance, so.
Right, but nobody's trying to tell the gun club to leave.
Right.
We're just saying if you want to live over there close to it, you need to try to find out what's around you.
But even if five hundred people call and say the gun club's going to go, it's not going, so.
Correct, but, uh, it just makes sure everybody, sometimes their due diligence is, uh, like yours, Gwen, uh, just didn't quite happen, and you wish you knew about it.
I mean, I know it happens, but I'm just saying.
There's a specific statute that protects the gun club from any nuisance action.
And that's cool, I mean, nobody's trying to do anything to them, I'm just saying, make, requiring the builder or whoever down the road to tell everybody that's coming here, okay, there's a gun club within, uh, you know, two blocks of earshot, I don't know how far it is away. I don't want to hear the football game over at the stadium, but I can hear it all the way in East Griffin, come on.
It's in my backyard.
I think my neighbor has two lot of a lawnmower, so, you know.
But, so, so, yeah, I mean, it's not a matter for me, and in that instance, not a matter of semantics, if there is something that can be done that is not going to cause, be cause prohibitive, I, I'll be willing to listen to it, but in real life, maybe if you want to put something on Amelia Road, but everybody else, it's like, should be open season, you just do what you need to do.
All right, any issue, we saw a, a couple of comments about DRI findings when Three Rivers did their business, anything there?
So the main concern with that was, um, among others, but the main one was the traffic on North McDonough, which they're been doing some of the improvements that were suggested, particularly, we, we, we talked with DOT about the signalized intersection.
Yes, sir, one of the main things that we do when we receive, uh, DRI requests from Cowee to County, from Merryweather County, from Butts County, uh, we make the same statements on our DRIs back to them, and it's in respect to the traffic, specifically around the Highway sixteen corridor, if it's coming from, uh, from Cowee to County, simply because that is the only vehicle that we have to, uh, inform GDOT that we have opportunities moving forward in the future. Um, just as an aside on that question specifically, uh, the DRI that had, the DRIs plural, many, that have come out of Cowee to County, we have re- routinely indicated that there is traffic issues, uh, that has resulted in the opportunity that, uh, that, uh, the chairman, your, yourself, TJ Mberger and I have met with ARC out of Atlanta, uh, who has proposed, uh, a planning project for the Highway sixteen traffic corridor, commercial traffic corridor, uh, because GDOT currently does not have anything on the plan for fifty years in the future for updating Highway sixteen. One of the things that I will, uh, will share with the board is that the one fifty-five corridor, GDOT's actually finally listening, in fact, uh, they are very soon to let a contract for a four-lane from, um, uh, the intersection at Publix on one fifty-five north of Spalding County all the way to I seventy-five, they're going to four-lane that for, um, for use. Uh, the more that we indicate that there is an issue traffic-wise with DRIs, uh, the more GDOT gets involved with the, the traffic issues that, that we have, so this is a common occurrence to list traffic as a finding on DRIs.
Okay, um. Anything on hardship?
In terms of?
Justification or anything like that?
I mean, it's, it's not a hardship, of course, that's a variance criteria, not a zoning criteria, but, uh, um, you know, naturally, they want to get as many lots as they can, um, you could still, if this is not approved and he still wants to, um, develop it, he could still get several hundred houses out of this thing, albeit he would not get this amount, um, but, you know, hardship is more a variance criteria than a rezoning criteria.
Now, we have Sun City, which is building away and halfway done or so, and now we're getting ready to have another fifty-five-year-old, uh, uh, community. Uh, are we oversaturating, uh, Spalding County with fifty-five plus?
I, there's a lot of population and a lot of aging going on, I'll, I'll be a candidate for it myself in two years, so, um, there's a lot of it, and we're.
It's the developer's analysis of supply and demand, and if they, they make the election.
I mean, there's tons of baby boomers that'll need somewhere to stay for at least another twenty years, so.
But there again, this entire thing is not the fifty-five plus, it's a mixed.
No, no, this is, this is.
It's, it's giving them options to have a fifty-five plus, and getting back on the hardship, uh, David, the only variance that's requested is related from village node, is related to that lot width dimension, correct?
And the house size, yes.
And the house size to go below fifteen hundred square feet, but that is only in the age-restricted areas.
So, words that he just said, age-restricted, we talked about this, it says age-related, and my concern was that if it's age, it, no, the words was age-targeted, which means I'll try to get fifty-five, but I can get other people. I'm, I'm just thinking that, but I also heard you say age-designated earlier when you were talking about something else.
If you adopt the conditions that have been drafted, it will be age-restricted, and a developer would have the ability to come in and identify if they wanted to do age-restricted, potentially throughout the entire development, that's not required, there are three pods that are identified specifically as age-restricted, and that is because of the presence of the forty-foot lots and the minimum size restrictions. Uh, Christopher, could you put up that pod, the, the PDF I sent you?
Oh, so Newton, if, if my husband and I, which we are clearly old fifty-five.
So am I.
And I have my grandson, I'm, I'm bringing a child into a fifty-five and older, there's nothing that would stop that, is what, the, the point I'm trying to make. Because if you say age-targeted, that doesn't mean that there is a line, so, so that is my concern for the, that area, I know that the rest of the area, anybody can buy a house, but when we're talking about specifically for senior, um, you know, it's easy to say this on the front, and then on the backside, who's, who's checking to make sure that we're, we're checked and balances, so I'm looking at that on the front side in terms of the language.
If it moves, if you have, if they have a developer that wants to buy property and do fifty-five and over, there are three areas that are targeted for that, and those are pods A, F, and G, and those will have to comply with the Fair Housing Act, because age restriction is the only basis of discrimination allowed under federal law or under state fair housing, and that is the same thing we have applied to Sun City.
So, so my question is, does that mean that fifty-five with family? does that mean that fifty-five with family, like children, can move in there because you meet the fifty-five requirement? That's, I mean, so you're not just being active seniors now, you're being a family.
We we are restricting, if if they make that election, we're restricting it to seniors.
And that is only on the orange lots? The other lots, you could do what you wanted, but you could not live in the twelve hundred square foot houses on forty foot wide lots if you were under fifty-five.
Hold on a minute.
Yeah, and and answer your question partly about enforcement, uh, out at Sun City, I'm not, this is over my head, but out at Sun City, every two years, we have to come in and everybody has to show their I D card, uh, their driver's license for age. And the rule I was told was eighty percent have to be able to be living there, and we have almost a no children. There is an issue for nineteen and up.
Uh, I was about to identify that because that is in both the code provisions and in your covenants. And and what we've done on the age restriction, so you'll know, and assuming you were A, approved, assuming you approved this to start with, or B, approved conditions, the goal for those pods or development areas, that neighborhoods that will be age restricted is essentially the same as Sun City Peachtree.
What's the mechanism to ensure that they are?
Uh, two, two ways, James. Number one is we have separate, separate conditions related to the age restricted neighborhoods.
Which are reactive, though, somebody would have to report it or something.
And they, we require them to have covenants exactly as we have with Sun City Peachtree.
So so we're requiring them to have an H O A in A, F, and G?
Correct.
If that.
Well, well, each neighborhood, whether it's age restricted or not, is gonna have to have an H O A. And there will be a rental restriction for each one of them, assuming you approve the covenants.
Twenty percent. Okay.
Wow, that's high.
Yeah, that's uh, yeah, yes, and the the enforcement, somebody, somewhere along the line, those numbers are turned in to somebody at at Sun City. Uh, I just, yeah, they get all the numbers up, and they do all that stuff, and if we haven't got enough people that have done it, they just keep beating you up until you get, you come in and show your I D card and do that, and then that's turned in.
Just to make sure you haven't got any younger.
You're sorry?
Just to make sure you haven't got any younger.
James, what we did, we took.
Yeah. I'm getting younger.
David's basic conditions. We took David's basic conditions, and then we addressed other issues we have to make certain that if you approve this, what you approve gets built in the manner and with the design and style that you approved it.
But like, what happens if it doesn't?
What happens if it doesn't? They're in violation of the conditions, and that is a zoning violation, and we have to pull them back in. You have to pull.
Grayson, Grayson Park didn't do that.
Pardon me?
Grayson Park didn't do that.
On which which part?
Grayson Park was in super violation. We, they 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 weren't the right size. They didn't have all the the different curb cuts. I mean, there was all kinds of violations in Grayson Park. We didn't, we didn't do any of that.
Well, I will tell you, I have concerns about, I have had concerns about code enforcement and the ability of the county to monitor, because we do have circumstance, circumstances like that. My greatest, uh, in my view, the greatest violation is Wolf Creek R six on Highway nineteen. Right. But, and this is something I was gonna address with you. Y'all have to have the commitment to provide David's office with sufficient resources to monitor this. For example, we have imposed conditions dealing with design and criteria for the houses that are, in my opinion, stringent. All right? It requires compliance and proof of a plan before David's office issues a permit. You're gonna have to have the staff there to be able to enforce this.
We agree.
Yeah. And again, and that's part of, part of raising the bar in terms of qualifications and criteria for the for the house construction.
I I agree.
We tried to make that mechanism as simple as possible.
We didn't have that with Grayson Park. Do we have that now?
We will with this, because I I took that into account. Basically, in very simplistic terms, let's say this gets approved, and we're at the building permit process. By that time, Spalding County has already approved, I don't know, Exhibits A through F as far as house styles you can choose from. The stamp of approval is put on these are nice, we're gonna let you do these. So in our office, you would have, they come up there and apply for permits for one of these pods, and they have some, they give us elevations, floor plans, all the materials for a permit. We look at them every day for building permits. They have some design that doesn't correspond with A through F, any of those exhibits. They're not gonna be allowed to do it, because this is what's will be known to be approved for this development. And you either stick with that based on these conditions, or you don't.
Now, now, James, the trade off for this is development rights that exist under R two, which is what most of this property is owned. And I won't discuss this much in public, but you don't want that. From the standpoint of the county, you do not want this developed with all options under R two that can be done as a matter of right.
Hence why we need to update our zoning and building code. That said, my 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 question, now that we've established what would happen during the building process and the certification process and whatnot, once it's all built, what is to prevent A, F, and G all selling to eighteen year old owners? Uh, what 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 happens then?
The the risk would be no different than what you have in Sun City right now. You have by that time, that H O A, the senior citizen busybody patrol is going to have to get out there and monitor their neighbors and raise the point with the H O A. That will happen, have to happen in Sun City. It will have to happen in an age restricted development portion of this property.
But if.
That's why you've got fourteen pages.
H O A's rules are different than our rules.
I'm sorry?
The H O A's rules are different than our rules. So we're setting these rules for amount of rentals, age restrictions, et cetera. What mechanisms to enforce those rules do we have? That's that's the question.
The rental restriction will be a requirement of our code, of these conditions, but those, that requirement will be set out in the H O A, again, the same way it's done in the H O A covenants, the same way it's being done at Sun City. All right. So on one hand, and the H O A ultimately is is in control of that. Keep in mind, there are significant restrictions on us as a government differentiating between owner occupancy in a particular house versus a rental unit in a particular house, and we have to be cautious about it. Thus far, we have been able, I think, to legally go forward with the requirement that the developer impose the covenant restriction limiting the rentals. But it will ultimately be the H O A's responsibility to impose, uh, and I'm sorry, require the compliance with that. Now, the other things, the goal is to get the, get the provision enforced before David issues a permit. The strategy is to have them come in, show the plans being in compliance, showing where it's gonna go, have this developed by pods in a way that David's office can control it from day one before the permit issues. That's the goal.
My H O A in Pike is useless, because none of the wishes of the covenants are backed up by code. So everybody ignores them, and you can't take them to court, because there's nothing in magistrate court to, it's code violations or nothing. It's not private covenants. But these were backed up by the code as well.
Well, and the covenant is still a contract right. The covenant is still a private contract right. But this requires us, or requires the developer, rather, to come in with those covenants and impose those restrictions, and to back that up, we have conditions related to the design and aesthetics of the house that David's office can enforce at the time of the permit. And I I don't know any other way that that can be done.
All right, now, there's twelve, twelve house types?
I just used that as an example.
Yeah.
Maybe more, maybe less, but I I just, that was a hypothetical.
Okay, okay. Uh, all right, what else on this?
Did you ask the question about, can you change something that was asked us this morning about every three designs you can? Was that a question?
I I had him get up with Wade, Wade and David said.
It didn't come out to anything.
Yeah, there's nothing there on that.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Uh, let me ask you a question about homeowners association. So like, if if you say there's gonna be um, a restriction on twenty percent of whatever the full development or a certain portion can only be rented or leased, does that include the actual homeowner doing a lease themselves? I don't know how that works. Would the homeowner have to go through a, the homeowners association and say that I'm moving, I want to lease my house out? And that's how the number gets done, or do you just say, this many units are rental units, and this is how we?
Homeowners do it by themselves. They take it to a real estate broker, real estate agent, and say, I want to lease this. We have some in Sun City, some specific timeframes. You can only, you have to at least lease it for this long at a time. I think it's, you can't do less than six months to be able to do it, and most of the people who are coming in are waiting for their house to be built.
Yeah.
So they re- lease to be able to do that. The concern is twenty percent of the houses, somebody coming in and buying up twenty percent of the houses, and then having a huge vote.
Yeah.
To be able to do something with, but you don't go through the H O A to do that. Uh, that's done by real, by homeowner to real estate.
I I I like the idea of of having the ability to have leasing, because as I said, we have people that work for us, not to mention in the medical profession and school teachers, who would probably love to live in that neighborhood, but can't, are are not able to buy a house, or not willing to buy one at this time, so.
All right.
I would offer them something good.
The the restriction says, again, assuming you approve it and assuming you adopt the covenants, the covenant shall provide that the number of residents that may be rented or otherwise occupied by a person or entity, because we see L L Cs buying houses, that does not own fee simple title of the house and lot shall be limited to twenty percent of the total number of lots or the number of houses constructed and occupied at the time, at the commencement of the rental, whichever is less.
So. Question is, is twenty percent too high? James brought that up. You know, do we think twenty percent is too high? That's a question we have to ask and say, is twenty percent too high?
Just because of the proportion of the rest of the county as well, I mean, we're already like way overbalanced towards rental. I mean, like way overbalanced.
Oh, we're we're overbalanced in terms of raggedy rental. We're not overbalanced in terms of appropriate rental, which is part of the problem, that people live somewhere else because they can't find decent safe housing here.
We we operate under that.
I I feel your pain.
We operate under. At at least I operate. This is just me. I won't impose this on David. But after doing this for almost twenty-five, twenty-six years or more, one thing I've learned is that left alone, a developer in Spalding County will gravitate to the lowest common denominator.
Yeah.
Therefore, you have to have the provisions in your covenants that prevent that from occurring, which goes back to what I said. To the extent we can, you want to use your conditions to ensure that what's presented gets built and is maintained.
Now, I want to, let's make sure, the the conditions we're talking about in the uh, resolution are going with the land.
Absolutely.
Not with the developer. It can't be the issue of one guy gets it developed and uh, one guy gets the zone, and then he passes it off to another developer, and all those rules go away. This has to stay with the land.
And you are tying it to zoning so that the covenants will follow after the developer has title, because keep in mind, if we should go through another recession, and these properties are foreclosed, and if the covenants didn't precede the loan, those covenants are gone at foreclosure.
So I had that in mind with this approval condition. They approved the exhibits, the architectural styles and features for development shall be provided to and adhered to by all future contractors slash developers within the development prior to building permits being issued. So with the extent, if it was sold off, whatever, all down the line would have to go by those exhibits and the plans.
All right, let's.
And that carries forward in what I provided to y'all, what we, again, what we took was David's and put it into others. And you'll notice that we define the developer as being everybody who owns the property now, Suns, uh, Minerva or its managing partner, and anybody who is a subsequent transferee or a successor or a son.
All right, so let's go to the, talk about the future tonight. I expect us to uh, vote to approve or disapprove the this uh, request. Then, if we approve it, we're going to do a resolution, which is the driving factor of it, and we will not do that tonight. We will do that in the future when all the uh, conditions and everything are put into one document for us to be able to do it. So uh, first step is uh, uh, approval or disapproval. Second step, if approved, this is your perk chart thing. If yes, then we'll, on the next or the next session or the session after, uh, where we do something, we will approve the uh, resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
If if you approve the resolution, you need to approve the conditions to go with it, subject to coming back on a, let's call it a second reading. And historically, I want to bring y'all up to speed on something. Historically, that is what the county had done. And we would, you would have your discussion, you would vote, and then when you came up on second reading, there would be an ordinance that formally adopted it. All right. Somehow, through transition in the community development office, that procedure has fallen through the crack and must be reactivated, because you are getting too many complex rezoning applications to be done. And I'm not, I'm not denigrating David's work, because he's hit this right on the nose if you approve it. But we have to go to the formality of having an ordinance, a resolution with the conditions clarified and set out to the extent that we can do it as clearly and as completely as we can.
Now, Mr. Galloway's resolution, which has been provided to you, covers all those conditions, and it covers, unless something's added this evening, if you approve it, it's covered the latest request.
Correct.
It is.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody understands. We're gonna approve something tonight, but in the second reading, it will be in an ordinance resolutions factor uh, to be able to. That reminds me, David, I'm just driving around, looking at uh, barriers uh, between. We gotta make sure that everything that's in there says something about uh, evergreens or whatever the right word is, because all the leaves are gone, and where the barriers are in a couple places, I was able to say, oh, before, I thought this was gonna be all green. Now I can see what I didn't want to see. So whatever that, however the wording is of that, to be able to do that.
We require for each pod and for the commercial section in the conditions, a landscape plan, subject to David's review and approval.
Okay, David, you understand. I want it to be, I, ever, something that's green all year long. You can't see through it. Because when you put the nice trees up there and the leaves are all gone, you're seeing through it. Okay?
Now, the resolution, you, naturally, if you make some additions tonight, that'll of course need to be not approved tonight and redone.
You can approve it. You can make amendments to that, and then we come back with those amendments incorporated. And that, that's another reason for giving you something that is specifically laid out, so that if you've got a particular problem with a particular provision, you can identify that singular section for purposes of an amendment you might want to propose.
All right, do we believe, thank you, do we believe that uh, the developer is pretty well in sync with what we're talking about here tonight?
You have two, you have two provisions regarding sidewalks that the developer desires to discuss with you this evening.
All right, tell us about those before tonight.
It's the sidewalk on Omeida, the sidewalk on one fifty-five.
Okay, this is just cost issue, not wanting to put it up there, or is there a wet with depth?
They will present, they will, we anticipate that they will present to you a development reason to not have those there.
Okay, all right.
Did we ask about the driveway length?
Uh, driveway length is twenty-three point five, right? I don't want to ma- I want to make sure that we don't have, and what happened in Grayson Park is the driveways are too close.
We put that in there and specified.
And they linger at it over the drive, over the sidewalks and into the street. Uh, we want to make sure that that uh, from garage to sidewalk is.
That is one of your your latest additions to the document. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Other questions or comments on uh, this? Now, tonight, we will probably hear some more stuff that we haven't thought about and haven't talked about. When we do, we'll go ahead and listen to the, to the whole side of it. The developer will talk to us. We'll be able to talk back and forth. The developer will talk to us. We'll be able to talk back and forth with the developer to be able to do it. I wanna make sure, we're gonna have a number of people talking to us. This is not turning into a dialogue with the people who are talking to us. This is us listening, saying thank you, and then having an opportunity to talk to the developer about, hey, uh, what about this, and whether we give or take. Alright, we all square on this? Anything else with this? Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second?
Sure.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. We're adjourned. Thank you.